Good afternoon and welcome to the November eighteenth, one thirty P M city council meeting. At this time we'll stand for pledge of allegiance and prayer by our councilman Loftus.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we come thanking you again for this day which you have granted us. We thank you for every blessing that you have placed upon our city. And we pray dear Father as we try to move forward that you will continue to bless us. We want to thank you Father for this administrative staff that runs our city. We pray that you continue to bless them to continue to lead in the right direction. And also every employee that works for this city and trying to make it better for our citizens. We want to thank you and continue to ask you to bless them in Christ's name pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, um, next, uh, on the agenda number four, uh, questions and comments from any citizens? I do see some.
So we just had another recruit successfully complete, uh, the police academy last month. Um, and I'd like to introduce here to y'all so y'all can kind of put a face to who you're supporting in this program. Officer Hollis. This is Natalie Hollis. She's our most recent graduate from the program. She is, you will, you actually know her spouse who's one of our firefighters, which is really, this is really cool for him. Cause like one of his heroes actually stays in the same house as him. We're really happy for him. We know he's, he's equally excited for, uh, but Officer Hollis comes to us with quite a bit of experience in the, uh, in the real world. So she, uh, brings a lot to the table for us. We're really excited to have her. She, um, tried to, we've tried to recruit her for a little bit now. We're actually able to get her here. So she's going to do us a great job. What week are you on now?
Uh, week four.
So she's in week four of her field training program. So she's been with us for about four weeks now, but successfully completed the academy and, and just goes to show you that, how, how great the program has been for our department. If you look in the room at some of the officers we have here now, four of the ones sitting in the background now are products of our, uh, of our recruit program. So it continues to be successful. It continues, continues to give us great officers that have a connection to our community that stay with the department and do a great job for us. So we appreciate y'all's continued support of that. We're happy to welcome Officer Hollis to the department. Thank you.
Thank you guys for all that you guys do. We appreciate you. All right. Number five, the city manager's monthly report. Mr. Spelling.
So now we've got about a month of data in, you know, in the new fiscal year. So, uh, so far, you know, not just a whole lot to say on that. Uh, we have received about the one half of our property tax revenue already. This is kind of that time of year where I like to point out a few things on that. Remember that the property tax comes in mainly two big payments. We get that November check, which is for everything that got paid in October by all the probably loan companies. So, you know, if you've got a mortgage on your home, you know, they pay a lot in October. And then we get the next big chunk normally in January because January thirty first is the last day to pay without penalty. So you get the mortgage companies that paid in October because they want the discount. And then you get everybody else normally that pays to the last possible minute. So it's not uncommon for the general fund to operate in the negative for the first couple months of the year because we get those in kind of two big payments. And then don't forget, we get all of our industrial district contract money in one payment in the summer. So, you know, we kind of like, this month was actually, the month was positive, uh, by about five hundred thousand dollars, but for the year so far, about three hundred thousand dollars in the red and the general fund. But like I said, that is normal. So just keep that in mind because in October one, we, we pay all of our insurances upfront to get discounts. You know, there's a lot of one-time payments that come out in October and then we don't get a lot of our revenue till later in the year. So, but we're still trending pretty good on all of that stuff. Sales taxes, uh, was up nine percent for November. That is September collection. So the check we get in November on sales tax was for sales tax paid for in September. So that was right when the, uh, turnarounds kind of started. So we do hope that, uh, maybe the next couple of payments will be, you know, pretty good with the turnaround workers in town. The October payment was about two percent down. So right now we're in line with our budget. So we budgeted about a three percent increase. So with the, uh, October payment being down a little bit, which was for August collections before a lot of that economic activity started. So we're still doing pretty good with their, uh, not a whole lot to say on the water sewer side. We're on target right now. They, they're operating the year so far at about a seven hundred thousand dollar positive. Uh, unlike general fund, remember they pretty much operate a positive most of the year until we make the big debt payments in the summer. So just kind of wanted to point that out as we start looking at the trends with the new fiscal year. Uh, hotel occupancy tax, uh, the first month we've received eighteen percent of our anticipated revenue in the first month. So, uh, October collections would have been for September stays. So that does incorporate some of the turnaround. So we're starting off a pretty good with that. Depending on, you know, how that works, uh, you know, that support in both the mobile trailer that we, uh, mobile stage that we purchased, y'all purchased a little bit ago or last couple of meetings ago. And then, uh, we will be using, if we've got some extra, probably throw some of that towards some of our centennial activities and stuff that we've got planned for the coming year. So so far financially, everything's looking up pretty good. Projects, uh, screw pumps, the screw pumps are here. So they're going in this week. Hope to have that completed by the end of the week, and then that will, uh, stop us from having to pay that rental pump. We've been bypass pumping for that. I did put some pictures in the weekly update. If y'all had not seen what it's, I don't think I've ever shown you a picture of what the screw pump is. We've just, yeah, they're, they're, uh, probably twelve or fourteen feet tall. And so they, they pump up out of the, uh, clarifiers. So, and this is all on the waste water treatment plant out there. You've got the old plant and the new plant, which now they're both old, but one predates the other one. So this is in the older part of the, part of the sewer treatment plant. So those should be done, uh, next week. Uh, we previously talked that we did get well thirteen, uh, drilled and replaced. The way that C C Q works with that is you apply your permit to drill it. Then you drill it and then you got to send in your water samples and all your test results. And then they've got to approve a final permit to actually start using it in the potable water system. So it's drilled and now we're just waiting for them to approve that. That's on a four to six month timeframe. So, uh, we are still working on the final details. We've got, still waiting on approval for the construction permit on the new well in Northwest Wellfield. So we're still waiting on those and those are progressing. I did text, uh, the council yesterday. Uh, we were informed that the tech stock has selected our Bulldog Loop project for recommended funding in the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight fiscal year. So this is the second year we applied for that grant. This will build sidewalks around the Johnson Park area. It will connect Cedar Street and the state's new sidewalks on Cedar Street. It'll go all the way down Bulldog Boulevard, connect the dome, connect the youth center, go on behind the stadium, come back around there by the horseshoe pits. Go back around, uh, by Saint John's Church and the up and down Saint John's Road, coming back in behind Pantex and connect over to the sidewalks back behind Pantex. And then we'll go to connect, uh, to the state sidewalk there at Saint John's and West Wilson. Again, what we've talked about, this was, this trail was called out in the Parks Trails, uh, Recreation Master Plan that we had done back in twenty twenty. So this is coming to fruition with that. It's a five million dollar grant. Uh, because of some of the economics of our county, uh, the federal government's tax credits will pick up the rest. So there's actually no match for us in this. Now we will have to pay the cost of the whole project and then submit for reimbursement, but we will be reimbursed for all expenses. So there's actually no matching costs in this. So this, I think it's a pretty big win. Pretty good project. We probably would have never been able to fund that, uh, by ourselves, but it, it does a lot of good out there. It will also replace that little bridge kind of over there that connects the grassy area to the youth center. So we'll actually get a good pedestrian bridge as part of this project for that. Uh, when it's all said and done, you'll have kind of a closed loop of about a mile and a half. So we'll get a good walking path and, and we'll make sure that we have signers for this. Now, like I said, this is for award in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight state's fiscal year. So this is still a couple of years out, but, uh, it's coming. So we'll talk more on that. Probably will hit our fiscal twenty eight budget. But, uh, we are pretty excited about that. I did a lot of work on that last year on the one that got, or two years ago that got denied. Strope did a lot of work on it this year. So he was, uh, pretty excited for all of that. But that, I think with everything else we've got going out at Johnson Park and what the school's done out there and, and how we've been doing a lot more events, I think that'll be pretty nice to have those, those sidewalks and bike paths and everything out there too. So. As we start going through our department operations last month, of course, H R is in the middle of open enrollment right now. So, you know, we're enrolling benefits for all of that. So that definitely takes a new time. I think some of y'all have met Raven, who was our new H R specialist that we brought on, uh, this year. So she's been baptized under fire a little bit, but her experience with, uh, Dallas Independent School Districts definitely showing some benefits. Uh, you know, she was a benefit coordinator for, I'll get this wrong, but you can imagine how many teachers and staff that Dallas Independent School District has. So she's pretty familiar with that. And as, as needy sometimes as our employees were, I think it sounds like Dallas was much more needy. So, which doesn't necessarily completely surprise me, but so she's enjoying that job. And I, I know that, uh, that'll help all of our departments and our employees have access to, to people to make sure we get all that done. In a finance, we did finally move our accounts receivable module went live and in code ten. So that's the last piece of the financial puzzle through our software core, uh, upgrade that we did last year. So they're working through a few little bugs with that, but so far it's been pretty good. In emergency management, uh, they've already started planning for some events next year. You want to mark your calendar. Of course I'll put this in updates, but it's way out there. The health and safety fair next year will be April twenty third. And then they're also working with our public engagement team on the, uh, what we're calling the ripple effect, which is the student expected driving, drunk driving, kind of shattered dreams type program that they're working through with that. Also still working through and promoting the nine one one address program and partnership with ACE. That's to make sure that your curbs are painted and that some of that stuff's been out on social media. So if anybody wants more information on that, they can, uh, deal with that. Also been doing some, some minor upgrades and equipping of the command trunk, uh, after using it for Boomtober Fest, you know, one of the, one of the nice whiteboards inside there was just the list of as you've realized you needed something or something, thing wasn't working right. You just wrote it up on the, on the little board. So now they're kind of working through that, that board. Also been working a lot with, uh, the Texas Forest Service, uh, here lately, you know, they are working on getting the airport designated as a seat base and probably a lat base. Because of that, uh, they're going to be here next week. I think we're going to try to find office space for two of their personnel to start officing out of city hall while they work on developing that project. The state did award Texas Forest Service money for their own air assets in this budget. So I think that's what we're looking at. If you might've seen some news with some of those, uh, single-engine air tankers and Canadian, those are the contract, uh, tankers. I think that's why they're looking here that they have signed the great lease agreement with the county for a hangar. So they'll be able to have the hangar space to actually keep their own assets undercover. So that's kind of what that's doing. We have completed the water and the hydrant additions out there, uh, required to support that. So that's pretty good. I do think, you know, just in a little bit of our discussions, I think depending on how that works and our cooperation with them, they are considering putting a, uh, ground base here as well for seasonal staffing of actually park service resources. So we've done a little bit of, uh, promoting on, you know, where you look at the big fires and where the big fire starts and, and speed on some of that stuff. But they do normally have dozers and graders in Amarillo, but you know, by the time you mobilize from Amarillo and get up here, you know, and they talked about Canadian, and we might've brought up the point that by the time the, the fires in Canadian, all you can do is put down that line and get out of the way and hope that the head stops there because, but, uh, so we are working on that. I think that'll be, uh, some pretty good, uh, resources in the community as we continue to focus on wildfire danger. Uh, G two oh five disaster recovery is being held at the dome today and tomorrow. So we do continue, uh, hosting, training there for the region. We have answered a few questions for our fire detection grant. So that's still progressing through, uh, FEMA for final approval. Uh, based on the questions, I don't think we have any problem. Most of their questions have been, we didn't carry the decimal out. They wanted prices to four decimal places and not two decimal places. So it, that's the type of questions they've been asking. They haven't been asking any, any meaningful or tangible. It's been clarifying on a few cents here or there. So, uh, that's coming. I T department's been busy working on our I D card rollout. So, you know, I know some of y'all have seen some of those, this doesn't impact y'all, but this is part of our two factor authentication, getting the cards to log into the computers plus passwords. As we kind of try to tighten down network security, keep our insurance costs down and to prevent cyber attacks. Also been working on finalizing and getting ready to, for the fridge I T services, which is on the agenda today. We'll talk a little bit more about that when that contract comes up. And then dispatch is working through a couple of openings though, I believe are interviewing this week. Playing development. So now that, uh, things have kind of stopped growing and they've been catching up, they have started turning some of their attention to, uh, twelve, uh, demolitions. So they first started there at twelve twenty five Thompson. So we've started tearing down, uh, so. We talked about this earlier, you know, the way we've been doing people, we've been putting more people on weeds in the summer and then focusing more on demolitions in the winter when we can kind of be more effective with that. So that's what they're starting there. And like I said, twelve twenty five Thompson, if the people that live in that area, I think are quite familiar with that address and have been quite excited to see it come down. So we are working through some of those. Planning zoning commission did fi- uh, approve the plat for Fairland Unit fourteen. So that's the final, the very north end of Loma Linda. That'll be six slots down there. Uh, we are still working with the developer on that for possible future, uh, construction and a little bit of incentive on the utilities there. The fire department, uh, Tyler Mailer completed his instructor one certification. Uh, they also participated the Halloween, uh, safety demonstration at Paul Belton for Halloween's safety. And of course we're at the Halloween carnival. Any of y'all put your little bag under their little hose drop for, for your candy. Also at the Elks Lodge, uh, Veterans Appreciation Mill. And, uh, the first responder mill hosted by, uh, local bank. And then they've also just completed the first, uh, annual firefighter challenge. So they're going to be, uh, selecting a firefighter, you know, kind of like a competition on firefighter skills and they'll be awarding that every year. So that's probably what you saw down at the, uh, what used to be the little Cooper Park Community Building is now kind of their training, training building. So if you saw them down there working last couple of weeks, that's what they've been doing down. The Wildland Division, uh, we did get our firewise certification renewal submitted. So we are firewise again for another year. They're in the prep work for the, uh, seven mile burn again this year. So that, uh, you know, was burned two years ago. That is what stopped the fire from coming into town. So it's, uh, after all the rain earlier in the year, it's time to do that again. So they're prepping that. Also, uh, the Paladura Wildfire Academy has, uh, they're going to be moving to Borger. So we're going to be hosting that in future years at the dome. So that's, I think some pretty good news to get up here. And, uh, with that wildfire academy down at, uh, outside of Canyons where they've been having it. Uh, this year we had four wild mitigation personnel take classes, four structural personnel take classes, and then three of our personnel taught classes in it. So definitely be a, a good thing for Borger, getting that moved up here and, and a little more regional exposure. And we have kind of talked about, you know, you've been seeing the white rack ambulance running around town. So we do have two ambulances down for maintenance right now. Medic two has been our problem child. It now has a problem with the turbo. At least it's a little different problem. Uh, medic three is the used one that we bought. That's been the most reliable. It, it just needs a fuel pump. So they just kind of happened at once. Of course, you know, we've got the solution on order at some point. If they ever come in, we have four ambulances on order at varying stages right now. If you recall that first ambulance that we ordered was supposed to have been delivered a year ago, February. Then they moved it to May, then they moved it to August, then they moved it to December, and now they've moved it to April. The only good thing is, is the one that's right behind it that was supposed to be here, uh, this December is still on the March, April. So we're likely going to get probably two and in pretty short order. But overall we do rent that from the rack, but it is available. So we're still managing to keep up with that. In public works, we've completed the drainage project on Lakeview Street. You know, that is part of the, everything in Buena Vista, you know, goes down Broadmoor and hits that area and then goes down Lakeview into the ponds before it goes down into the creek. Uh, so we put some more, uh, concrete there to prevent some deterioration of the, uh, pavement. Uh, we've been doing a few things out there every year. You know, we'd concreted Broadmoor the year before that in that area. The year before that we concreted the alley down Loma Linda where that flows. So this is continuing. This should be the last thing that we need. Then this summer we will seal coat and finish the road repair to that road to, to complete that. A street department also finally finished a striping on Roosevelt Street after our, all of our street work. So that is looking pretty good. And so far the micro surfacing is holding up pretty good there. Also been helping Frank Phillips College with barricades as needed for the new dorm construction as they go through the processes there. Uh, we have hired two employees at the transfer station. So the transfer station is finally back up to full stack, uh, even with one retirement, uh, coming up early next year. Parks department's been working with Trees for Texas in coordination with Phillips sixty six. So Phillips sixty six is, uh, corporate has donated a significant amount of money to Trees for Texas. And they've picked the communities, uh, that their facilities are located at. So we're flagged to get three hundred to five hundred trees on February twenty eighth. So there will be a public portion of this to where the public can come and get trees. And then a couple of hundred have been given, uh, we've been working with them to identify parks and locations to plant them. So we'll be adding a significant amount of trees into our parks, uh, in this fall too. And of course, if you haven't noticed, the Parks Department has already started their favorite thing of the year, Christmas decorations. That, uh, is somewhat, uh, rhetorical. I'm not sure how much they really like it, but, uh, but, you know, I do remind them that, uh, that's another one of those things if we didn't do, you don't realize how much the public likes it until it's, you don't do it. Uh, but, uh, we are starting to get in the holiday spirit around the town. So the tree's up and they'll be working on the poles coming up. So in the police department, uh, animal services, they've, uh, ordered their new cat adoption cages that were included in the budget. They've got a pretty lengthy lead time. Also started putting U V sterilizers in the truck. So they're, you know, working on reducing the, uh, spread of disease in those animals. So that'll help keep the trucks a little cleaner and trying to prevent that spread from intake to, uh, shelter in intake as well. So that's kind of a nice new little feature for them. Uh, Jared is, Jared Harper's completed his recertification. Candace has completed a, uh, urban wildlife course. And she was also at Paul Belton's career day. And then Darrell has completed his basic photography class. And the P D, they, uh, were out at the Walmart reopening. So that, well, we were, we were all gone for that. Or driving back from, uh, Dallas actually, but, uh, had a pretty big thing out there for their renovation and, and reopening. Sabrina Woods, the evidence technician is, uh, went to the tape it conference and she's got some good education there. Uh, we've got one recruit that's in the, you just met the one that just graduated, the next recruits in the final hiring stages for the next academy that starts in January. So they are working through that. Uh, Lieutenant Gibbsman out there has completed his second module of Lehman. And I guess he survived somehow. He's at least made it back. Uh, yeah, we're also at the Halloween carnival, uh, the honor guard, uh, participated in the diamond drop ceremony for the, sorry, the diamond reveal. I say diamond drop because of, there's another city somewhere else in the state, you know, we do Boomtown Bucks. They do diamond drops. And their, their city manager is slightly more extroverted than I am. And so at one of our trainings, they were talking about that and they showed the video they produced for, for that. And he and his assistant city manager dressed up as Spartan cheerleaders from Saturday Night Live. And when they go give the employee their diamond drop, they did a little cheer. And so that's been like burned in my brain ever since. Because there's no way in hell anybody'd ever get me to do that. But then they started their diamond reveal. And so now every time I think of diamond, diamond drop comes out first, but the diamond reveal for the Kwan is they participated in that. So, and then they also were at the, uh, Hero Day and the, uh, local first responder dinner. In the court, Evolys completed, uh, another, some more training at the T M C C, getting ready for her next certification level test. Uh, they have a pretty busy month coming up, uh, in December with a lot of court cases, getting ready for that. And then, uh, you know, we talked about a little bit, it won't be too long before Stella's got to start planning the next general election. We've got the, uh, local option election called, so we'll be tying on to that. With civic convention in Main Street, uh, been all over Facebook and we did put the N over the news stories, but you know, case people didn't know, we were officially designated as a Texas Main Street City through the Texas Historical Commission. Uh, they are actually in town this week, uh, starting their, going to be taking photos of some of the buildings and, and doing some initial assessments. Part of the resources we get is kind of like, uh, vacant building listing for all the downtown cities. So as investors are looking for things, they can come see what Main Street cities have. And so that's kind of what they're starting and getting pictures and stuff for their website and all the things they do to help advocate and advertise on our behalf. So that's exciting. We do have lunch scheduled with, uh, their team to, uh, tomorrow. So you're going to start seeing some, some of that. We are working on the finalization of the, what Nicole calls the downtown thrive grant, which will be our tiers grant. So that's a plan on going through the tiers probably later this year, early next. And they'll be for council approval after that. I've also reached out to, uh, Park Hill to kind of see what, what they might can do and how they could help with some of that. So we've had some pretty good feedback from them on what, what services and things they can do either pro bono or on a, on a cheaper cost basis to support that. So definitely, uh, trying to push that relationship a little far forward. And they've been very forthcoming with that. Also, uh, been coordinating with, uh, B E D C, the border chamber, Phillips sixty six for the business boot camp that's coming up. So the E D C is going to provide some finances for that. So that, that if, if, if the business owner participates in it, they're going to get some money. And so that's if they complete the course. And so that's kind of what some of the feedback has always been, you know, them giving up time and how to get through some of that. And so that's kind of what the E D C is putting up with that. We've, uh, talked a little initially about even using some, maybe some tiers money for like, uh, in Amarillo, they call it the enterprise challenge through the W T enterprise center. We might do something like that, you know, to help as a way to give some money to maybe a new business that might need some help. So tie it to some, some performance and some competition type things. And so we're working through some of that. So that with everything that's going on between the tiers and the main street designation and the business boot camp, I think, you know, in the next year, we're going to see a lot of, a lot of movement, a lot of new cool things coming to downtown. So I know some people think that's been kind of slow. Of course, you know, I always joke all the time that, you know, you've got to give me three things to work with me and one of them's A, it's the, it's the government. So nothing happens fast. And so we've been very deliberate in how this process has worked, but I think we're finally to the point where you're going to start seeing a, a lot more of that come. Also been prepping for the winter growth camp. So that's kind of instead of doing the, uh, skating rink that we've done like the last couple of years, we decided to do a winter growth camp, which is kind of like a shortened park wreck. But over the winter break to give kids something to do over the winter break. So they've got sessions and different topics broken up throughout the two week period and the days. And so that's, uh, going to be, I think, a pretty good thing. They've got, uh, twenty kids signed up so far. They have a total of sixty slots. So, you know, a lot of people always wait to the last minute. So I do probably expect that to fill up. It's going to be mostly at the dome, but they might rotate to a little different places, but we're, we've set some money aside to feed them and do all of that stuff. So it's pretty much just like Park Rec, but a little bit smaller and over the summer break. So we're hoping that, you know, this is, you know, if you've got kids and you don't know what to do with them while they're off school and you're still working, this is kind of a, a program to kind of help that. So we thought that might be a little better idea than, than spending money on the, on the ice rink. And that's been cool, but it's, it's kind of lost a little bit of money. So if we're going to lose money, we wanted to try something a little different. So we're excited about this. And then they also have this year sip and shop scheduled for December thirteenth. So those signups are out there. If you want to partic- participate in that, they've got some vendors set up at the dome. You'll start at the dome and, and do some vendors there. And then we use the buses and the, and the van to haul everybody around to all of the different shops that participate. It's a great opportunity to expose you to some of the different shops and different products that are available in town that, that maybe you don't know that we have. I know that Deidre and Nicole are both surprised every year. How many people say, well, I didn't know this was here. I didn't know they had that. So it's a really good way for us, you know, doesn't cost us a whole lot, a whole lot to organize it and provide the transportation, but it does get a lot of exposure and really helps our local businesses. So we're excited for that. And finally, in public engagement, of course, our latest quarterly newsletter is out and going out on the water bills right now. I think probably everybody should have, most everybody should have gotten that. It's been pushed out on the website as well. Deidre's also been working. It's our next website refresh is coming up next year, which is just in time for our centennial. So we're working on that. We have the employee and retiree appreciation banquet coming up. So they're getting ready for that along with coordinating the ripple effect. So they're getting ready for that, along with coordinating the ripple effect later this spring. Uh, they also helped with project shield just installing the uh. Fire suppression little pucks that they got bought for the, for the vent hoods. You might have seen some of that on social media, some of the press. So part of the donations coming into project shield this year bought those little automatic there. To me, they almost look like the little ferno fuel cans, but they've got suppressing in it with a little temperature. Expander thing. So if it gets hot, it pops open and puts the powder down and puts the fire out. So. Those are in the housing authority, the elderly area of the housing authority, Tejas. And so if they're cooking, you know, and they can't get to it, it'll just, it'll deploy and put out the fire without any intervention. So that's something that we talked about when we moved to project shield from just using the kind of the set programs. We've been able to decide what we spend that money on. And so that's. One of the things we did this year, we've bought bicycle helmets for all the elementary kids with some of that money. So we've had a lot more flexibility by taking that in-house. Uh, in case anybody, any city employees or the council or anybody else wants to come, the uh. Elementary school kids will be at the dome December twelfth to sing Christmas carols. So they'll be rotating through there to sing Christmas carols to city staff or anybody else that wants to show up. So that's December twelfth at the dome. Of course, December sixth is Christmas on Main with the Christmas parade following. It's a little different this year. That is a Saturday. Uh, I will have hot chocolate. It might be just me here. So if anybody wants to come help make hot chocolate, they can uh show up. And then we also have our twenty twenty-six list is all is out now. So if you go to visitborger.com, all the events for twenty twenty-six are listed. The Facebook events have all been made. So all of that stuff is out there. So there again, you know, I know I talk about this pretty regularly, but you know, we always hear, well, I didn't hear, I didn't know anything about that. You know, there again, remember it's in the newsletter that gets mailed out quarterly in your water bill. It's on visitborger.com. It's on the city's website, borger texas dot com. It's on all the social media platforms. It's on the digital billboard over by Starbucks. And they're on fires when you come into city hall. And then certain events are advertised on TV. So really, you know. You don't know about something, it's because you're not looking. So. But that's uh what we've done for the last month. I'll entertain any other questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Let's move on to San Gin. Bernie, questions? I move to make a motion.
All right, I make a motion. We approve consent item six through nine.
Second.
Items to be considered, um, ten. Consider a take and take appropriate action to introduce on first reading ordinance O dash zero one six dash two five, releasing certain property. From the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ of the city of.
So in twenty twenty-three, the state law changed uh to allow people to request removal from our extraterritorial jurisdiction. The ETJ is within, for a city of our size, populations, the area within one mile of the city limits. So previously the states allowed certain regulations in the ETJ. Uh, generally for us, that's sign regulation and subdivision regulation. And like with subdivision regulation, the thinking behind that's been like, if you build something in the ETJ, it likely might be annexed into the city at some point. So therefore we want to make sure that it meets our subdivision design standard so that it can interface and and react with all of us. We've, haven't done much with that. Uh, we haven't really regulated a lot of signs either. The thinking behind sign regulation is that you don't want, you know, a whole bunch of billboards stacked up right before you enter the city. Which is generally where that comes from. Uh, but the state law did change to allow property owners to request removal from the ETJ. If they do that. Uh, we pretty much have to remove them. If we don't take action to remove them within thirty days, they're automatically removed. So just to make sure that our records are kept up to date and that we've got a record of the fact that something is being removed from the ETJ. Uh, we are going to go ahead and do this like we would, would have normally been able to do it prior. If we voluntarily allowed somebody to leave. Now we don't have a choice, but we're following that, that same procedure. So the area in question. Is the little bit of the Mr. W fireworks building that's outside of the city. So I did uh put a new map on your bias there. So you could see the exact area we're talking about. The city limits runs through already a pretty good significant portion of their property. For the most part, the only thing that's not in the city limits that's in the ETJ is the building. And so what's going to be removed is just that little bit highlighted in blue on that map. And like I said, that they don't, we don't really regulate anything, but. A lot of cities do take more strict regulation on fireworks. So I think that's why as a company and corporate. Structure, they've just probably removed anything and everything they have in an ETJ from an ETJ. So. Questions?
I move to approve ordinance zero O dash zero one six dash two five, releasing certain property from the city of Borgers extraterritorial jurisdiction.
A second.
Eleven, consider and take appropriate action on an interlocal agreement between the city of Borger and the city of Fridge for information technology services, Mr. Sproul.
So we, we talked about this in a work session, uh, you know, a couple of months back. Uh, so Fridge has decided to go ahead and and request that we, we do this. This is a, a flat rate contract. They'll pay us thirty thousand dollars a year to provide the services. The contract does have a maximum amount of hours that will uh. Provide for that. So. That thirty thousand dollars is based on the actual cost that would be involved in that. The contract does not allow any overtime to be used. If if they do use overtime, we will bill them separately for any employee overtime that's incurred. Uh, we will also bill separately for mileage if we have to go onsite. Uh, so. They will also pay for any license that are required. So like all of our computers in the city, we have a remote monitoring and remote assistance software that goes on them so that I T can. Get in and fix a lot of things remotely. They'll be getting that same software. They already use a lot of the same systems we do. Their police, police department uses the flex CAD just like we do. Uh, they use N code nine for their utility billing and things like that. A lot of things that we're already familiar with, which makes this pretty, pretty, it's good to offset a little bit of our costs. It's not going to be a whole lot more. I think they've got a total of like twelve in user terminals. The city of, but we have like a hundred and ninety. So you know, the percentage of additional work that this add is adding isn't just a whole lot. And in a lot of ways, it'll make things easier or like. If we make sure that their CAD's working, that that makes it easier for dispatch to get things to them and make sure that they're communicating, they're on the radio system. Uh, that we already maintain for all of that. So pretty, pretty easy. And I think, you know, this saves them a little bit of money and makes us a little bit of money in it. There's no, really. Like I said, there's no additional cost to us, maybe a little bit of workload, but if it goes over the overtime or the hourly threshold, it's billed hourly. So. Questions? It, when we, anytime we can be efficient together. Yeah. They were paying a private company out of Amarillo. They've had some issues getting them over here. Uh. I think at one point the bill was like twelve hundred dollars just to install a new computer, just in mileage and labor to come over and put a new computer and hook it up. So. And you know, I T's not going anywhere and there's some benefit in us having that staff and then, you know, deferring some of our costs. So.
I move to approve and interlock an agreement with the city of Fridge for information technology support services. And authorize the city manager, excuse me, the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
And it passes. Well, consider and take appropriate action on resolution R dash zero one dash two five. Authorizing the city's participation in the panel region, regional mutual aid agreement. And designating the mayor to serve as the city's representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in this.
Well, this is just a revision of our regional mutual aid agreements that are in place for a long, long time. So they revise these every few years. This is done through the Panhandle Regional Planning Commission and their uh, premac, the Panhandle Regional Emergency Management Committee, which is their advisory committee on emergency ma- management matters. Uh, changes are fairly minor. They're mostly just updating some federal terms and and some things like that. Uh, the cost and the way we actually utilize it is, is not changing. Uh, but this pretty much, you know, if somebody needs it, they can call us. If we need somebody, we can call them. And so this is just in that, that first step of local regional emergency response. So this is not TIFMS, this is not star requests through the state. This is. Kind of the local things we use a lot more often on a, on a day to day basis. So this is what like, if Fridge needs help with the structure fires, this is what covers that. If we need Fridge or Stinet to come, that's what covers that. So. Like I said, it's been in place for a long, long time. Uh, just seems here lately that everybody's kind of updating their, a lot of their agreements. So you know, we've, this is like what, I think number three or four that we've kind of just. Reaffirmed with some few minor changes, but if you have any questions, I'll.
Hi, dude. How does this work? Do, do, does our emergency management pretty much handle this behind the scenes or is our mayor constantly called for anything?
So the, the, it, it depends on how big it is from a, from a smaller standpoint, if we need Fridge or Stinet, we'll call direct. Or since we dispatch for them, it just gets dispatched through our dispatch center without. The fire department on saying says Borger, dispatch fridge, we need their help. They do it. Uh, if it gets a little regional, if it gets maybe Carson County, maybe even Hansford County, it might be dispatch makes a phone call to them directly to their dispatch center. Outside of that, it normally goes through emergency manager. And so emergency management will, dispatch will call Whistler or Pender. Whistler or Pender will call the PRPC, which uh. They staff what's called the MAC, the multi-agency coordination center. And so that's where they do it. So they will take those requests. Now, in a big, big incident. They then determine which resources to send to what request. If there's like. In, in the big February fires, you know, you had us calling, you had Stenect calling, you had Canadian calling. And so all those requests for regional resources go into the region, the MAC. And they decide who gets what. So, okay, we've got this many cities that 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 have put this stuff together. And so they call the cities that they. The MAC will call like Canadian or Breona or whatever it is. Hey, hey, we need, Borgers looking for resources. What do you have available? And can you send any of them? And then they put a list together and then they will normally bind them into strike force, uh, strike teams or task force. So that's normally a grouping of five resources and then that's what they send out. So you send out a group, a strike team or task force. To Borger and then maybe if they got enough resources, send one out to Stenet or whoever's requesting. Does that kind of make sense?
It does. And that's what I would have expected. And I was kind of wondering what the, it says the mayor is in charge of it all or something like that.
The mayor, the mayor by state law is the director of emergency management.
Okay.
And so by law, she is technically in a, in a declared state of disaster, the person. Now we, she appoints an emergency management coordinator. So a lot of that is delegated to the emergency management coordinator, which in our case is Jason Whistler. And he handles all of that. So normally from a practical standpoint, staff normally handles all of it. What goes to the mayor is the emergency disaster declarations. Uh, for signature. And keep in mind, even those, even the mayor's authority is generally short term. So a, a mayor issued declaration disaster has to be ratified by the council within seventy-two hours. So. At the county level. So, and we haven't done a lot of that because if the judge does it. If the judge issues a c- uh, emergency declaration for the county, it includes the city. So if the judge is doing it, we may or may not need to do it. Through the mayor. And so like in February, those February fires, we didn't do it because. A, we weren't directly impacted by the fires. Now, all of our emergency response personnel were involved in, in managing and fighting and and coordinating. But our local jurisdiction was not. So in theory of the mayor's authority is generally for emergencies that are contained to the city of Borger. Uh, in the past, we've done this for a winter storm, uh Jupiter. Which you may or may not remember, that was well before Yuri, but we had all, we had that massive ice storm that broke all the trees and you know, we were. Cleaning up limbs and all the parks and down all the streets and had a big thing probably, ooh. Ten or fifteen years ago. And so that was one that, that they did that. So.
Good. I will make a motion.
I move to approve resolution R dash zero one eight dash two five, authorizing participation in the. Panhandle Regional Mutual Aid Agreement and designate the mayor as the city representative in all matters pertaining to this agreement.
Second.
Favor? Adam thirteen will consider and.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?